Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Castle.
Present.
Councilwoman Meadeen. Deputy Mayor Katz.
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt. Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Councilmember Sohn.
Here.
Mayor Parker. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by Resolution 137-2014, setting the 2014 meeting dates, and Resolution Number 154-2014, and sunshine notice dated July 17, 2014, amending the 2014 meeting dates, sending a copy to the record in the Jewish Standard, filing a copy at the Township Clerk's office, and posting it on the municipal building bulletin board, and the Deputy Mayor hereby directs that this statement be included in the minutes.
Thank you very much, and good evening, and welcome to the July 29, 2014 special meeting. Just for the record, also present is William Browden, our Township Manager, Jamie Avellina, we just heard from, our Township Clerk, Jennifer Jackson, our Senior Clerk, Issa Abassi, who's down below, who's Assistant to the Manager. From the law firm of Winnie Banta is William Rupp. We have Christine Brown here as well, our CFO. The person keeping this building so beautiful and clean is Clarence Barnes outside in the hall from the DPW, and behind the camera is Issa Abassi, and behind camera number two is Chuck Powers. Just a couple of scheduled, just a couple of announcements. The next televised council meeting will take place on Tuesday, August 12, with legal opening to begin at 7:00 PM, and public input will begin at 8:00. TNEC's National Night Out will be held on Tuesday, August 5, at Voty Park, from 5:00 to 9:00. It's going to be an exciting event, and we're told it is not going to rain. The next emergency preparedness seminar will be held at 7:00 PM on Thursday, August 7, at a TNEC Police Headquarters, 900 TNEC Road. All right, so we now open with Good and Welfare. This is a special meeting. Now, Mr. Attorney, do we need, do we do Good and Welfare, and we do a general input for the budget? Two separate events?
No, there's no requirement for you to put input on the budget.
So the Good and Welfare encompasses both, and I just want to recognize Howard Rose from the Board of Ed. All right, so we now have Good and Welfare. There's an opportunity for residents to come to the microphone and speak for up to five minutes. If you're speaking about the budget, this is the opportunity to speak about the budget as well. Barbara. Dr. Toffler.
Dr. Barbara Toffler, TNEC. I want to raise an issue which I am going to raise again at the August 12 meeting when the mayor is here, but it's something that, obviously, I have thought about for the last four or five years, and really came to me in sort of a wave at our last meeting, the last meeting being a budget discussion. At the budget meeting, there was discussion amongst the council about having a hiring freeze, perhaps through the end of 2015. After the council had a brief discussion about it, the manager then spoke at some length about why that was not going to be good, and for him to manage, he needed to have, be able to hire and have these positions available so that he could hire when he wanted. And what I was wondering about, and I have wondered about even for the four years I've sat on the council, is exactly who makes policy and how policy is affected. It seemed to me, well, let me step back now. I've done this little bit before, but I'm going to just do it quickly. And I know some of you have seen this little booklet. When my parents came to TNEC in 1948, they were given a little booklet about the town, which we actually had some talk about, maybe we should be doing something like it. But on the inside cover, it sort of lays out the government of this town as if it were corporation, and right up at the top, there are the stockholders, which are the residents. We are the people who put money in. We are giving you our money so that this place can run. And then, below the stockholders is the Board of Directors. That is the council. That is really the policymaking body. And then, below the policymaking body is the manager, who implements and acts upon the policy of the council and manages the departments that sit under him or her. So that's what I was thinking about. And so I heard this discussion about the hiring freeze, and the manager explaining why that wouldn't work for him to be, if he was going to manage as he would like. It occurred to me, and everybody, you can change or correct me if you wish, but it seemed to me, and I've been around corporate worlds for more years than I would like to say, it seemed to me that it was entirely appropriate for the policymaking body, the council, to say, "We have a budget crisis. We do have a budget crisis, and one of the things we are going to do to try and get things back into some level, some kind of stasis, is we are going to institute a hiring freeze. That is what we are going to do." Now, the manager doesn't have, I mean, he should accept the policy of the council. That doesn't mean he cannot come to the council and say, "You know, we have this and that situation, and therefore, I think we need to hire another DPW person, another police person, or whatever." And then, that becomes a matter for discussion at, guess what? At a work session. So the discussion is in front of everybody, and we all then hear why there's a hiring freeze, but why he needs someone, and a debate about whether or not it will be, the council will find a way to allow that to be done. That seemed to me the logical thing. It was like, all of a sudden, the manager said, "Well, this isn't going to work for me," and the council, it just sort of floated away. It also seems to me, I don't know, but it seems to me the council could make a decision saying to the manager, "You've got to bring in a budget at $69 million this year." I mean, I saw this happen plenty of times. Now, I also, without a good management, a good relationship between the policymaking body and the manager, you know, things can certainly go wrong in the affecting of policy. But if the council were to say, "This is the budget that I want," the manager would have to come back with $69 million. Then, again, at our budget meetings or a work session, then you have a discussion. This is what we would have to do to get $69 million. These are the things that we would have to cut. It becomes a discussion. People can get involved, and we all know what's going on, and you all know what's going on. It's out in public. And I'm, William, I do not mean this as an attack on you in any way. I really don't. I feel as if somehow the whole decision-making process, and I've certainly seen it from, is that the time up already? All right. I just got, I'm going to say one more thing. I'm going to pretend I'm Alex Rashin and say one more sentence.
But you know what? I'll pretend that I'm Mohammed, the former mayor, and start yelling at him.
Okay, you can do that.
If it's possible, if you can just find the period.
The one thing that I do remember Helene Fall saying all the time is, "What does council direct me to do?"
That's a good point. Thank you. Anyone else wish to, yes?
Before I get time, maybe if you still could. I haven't pressed the button yet. Thank you. There's enough here, I believe, for yourself, the manager, and the entire council. Good evening. I have a concern regarding the budget, and as a reminder, I'd like to read to you an article from Wednesday, February 5, 2014, in The Suburbanite, by Megan Burrow, TNEC Suburbanite. "The TNEC Council Continued Its Discussion of the 2014 Municipal Budget Last Week With Its Fourth Special Budget Workshop Meeting. But Some Residents Have Argued Taxes May Rise More Than 2% Higher Than Their Reported 3.11% Due to Falling Revenue in Town and the Large Number of Tax Appeals Filed in the Past Year. Residents Also Once Again Asked the Council To Make Cuts To The Proposed Budget To Ease The Burden On Taxpayers. Tonight We Have, All Have A Common Goal: Optimizing TNEC Within The Limits Of Fiscal Responsibility," Said Howard Rose. Let's Get One Thing Straight. TNEC Has Never Been A Full-Service Township. Is It A Multi-Service Township That Exceeds Most Bergen County Municipalities? Realize, Though, That The Level Of Service Must Vary To Accommodate The Capacity Of Residential Wallets. The Council Must Not Be Insensitive To Those Living On Fixed, Lost, Or Reduced Incomes. I'll Be Frank. You Don't Provide Services Based On The Wants Of The Wealthy." Now, this is a half a year ago. We've come a ways, six months, but that's the only way we've come so far. We're still about in the same place budget-wise as we were a half year ago. I'm expecting great things from this council, and by golly, it seems like tonight's the night that you're supposed to produce them, if it's regarding the budget, one of the most important things that you do as a group. I regret that we don't have the additional council members here for the discussion. I think about it, and to think, you know, if you extrapolate what's going on and kind of give it another idea from another vantage point, how do you stop war? You stop sending missiles. How do you stop increases in budgets? You stop increasing dollars. Ties in with what was said before with former councilwoman. And, you know, I don't understand why we don't use a budget, or we say to the, well, neither the council has said to the manager, nor do I believe the manager has said to his staff heads, "Here's the amount of dollars. Show me the best you can do for our residents regarding the responsibilities that you are compelled to perform." Why isn't that going on? This council, not this council, but TNEC's council, several years back, forced the Board of Education into a fiscal audit. Never gave the council a fiscal audit. What's going on there? I don't understand how you have the audacity, as a council, and I'm talking councils in general, to say, "Do as I say, not as I do." Board of Ed has brought in a 2% increase, and thank you, by the way, Deputy Mayor Katz, for the recognition for my position on the Board of Education. The Board of Education has several budgets now, brought in 2% or under percent increase. This is well after the substantial decrease that it had received. There are machinations, just like in council, where they can increase beyond the 2% mandate by the state, just as this council has and has used all the machinations they can find to increase and go beyond the 2% budget. It may be legal, but it is not right, and that's what I hope that you start thinking about. Thank you for your time and listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak during Good and Welfare? Go once. I'll get you next, Ms. Kramer. Dr. Powers, and then you. Alex, do you speak today? I'll be here, clean up.
Chuck Powers, TNEC. I don't know whether you folks are keeping track of the excellent work that Tom Abbott does on tracking how this township handles its issues associated with taxes. This line right here is the line which constitutes the percentage of the tax split, property tax split, that is caused by the schools, and this line right here is the line that shows what's been happening as a percentage of the tax split that is being spent by the municipality. That line has gone up 8%, this line has gone down 5%. That's pretty astounding. It's a very good piece of, those are two and a half pages that every council member should spend a lot of time understanding. I want to pick up on several things that were said. I will by tomorrow noon have up on my TNEC transparency both the discussion of the report that Mr. Sohn gave for the Subcommittee that was created by this council on the budget, about an 18-minute conversation, at the end of which, Dr. Pruitt makes it very clear that we're not in a position where we can just keep on doing what we've been doing. And then, a 22-minute discussion by the manager of the 13 to 15, it's kind of hard to keep track, 15 reasons why the budget need not actually reflect what it is that anybody thinks is going to be spent. It was a 13-point argument that says the budget shouldn't tell you very much about what you're going to do. You have a lot of extra places, and while the mayor had just gotten through saying, "If we don't need it, we shouldn't have budgeted for it," and the manager says, "We need to have it in order to handle the fact that we've already spent, at this time of the year, 90% of the overtime that we had, what, budgeted?" No, we hadn't budgeted anything this year for overtime. We're going on last year's budget. Folks, it is really, really important that you deal with the fact that this township cannot keep on laying more burdens on its citizens. I noticed today in the Bergen Record that somehow Emerson, which actually has a household income that exceeds that of TNEC's by 7%, managed to put an artificial field on with a fence around it, with a track around it, for $3 million? Not four? We were at four, we're over four, well over four by the time you add all the different add-ons and all the studies and all the rest that's been done. Well over four. Not three, not two. $1.4 million. Somehow, this township has got to make sure that its elected officials, who give not just advice but direction to its manager, figure out some way to break the current impasse that doesn't allow us to figure out how to change stuff like this, two lines converging in a way that's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim.
I wasn't here, I was on vacation at the last meeting, so I'm going on the basis of the article in The Suburbanite that I read yesterday afternoon, and I am going to just follow through again on the same issue that I have talked about even three years ago, about the legal costs for this town. This is a part-time job, the township attorney. Mr. Turets represents many towns, not just TNEC, and also does other legal work. He has been the attorney since 2000. In the past years, he has started to, he has changed, started to charge extra for general legal work, such as writing ordinances, resolution, giving advice to the council and manager and clerk. When Turets started working for TNEC, and for the entire history of township attorneys working for TNEC, all of these charges were included in the modest retainer paid to the township attorney. In some towns, some of this work, ordinances, resolution, is done by the town clerk. Turets says that he is giving TNEC a 20% discount on general work. 20% from what? Certainly, it should not be from the highest years where he charged TNEC an average of almost $300,000 for general work alone. You should average all the years, especially those when he charged zero extra, other than the retainer for his general work, because that is always the way it has been done and done in other towns. I am not sure how and why he has convinced you that he only can handle TNEC legal work. By doing that, you and previous current councils have allowed him to dictate his contract, charging more than any other town for regular township work. There are many other attorneys out there who can do the work. They do it for their own towns and are respected by their councils. If this was your own personal money you were spending, you would probably research contractors who are equally qualified and choose the one that gives you the best rate. But here in TNEC, the current attorney decides with no competition. And I would hope that the record and The Suburbanite do some research, compare towns, compare what township attorneys get. No one is totally unexpendable. There are other people that can do the job if he refuses to do it for less. It doesn't make any sense. It is costing, you could save at least $200,000, at least, if not more, if you just change the contract back to what it used to be. The other thing I wanted to talk about that was in the article was the quote from the mayor in The Suburbanite, saying that the council should not be dictating a hiring freeze, which is the job of the manager. I was not here, so I'm not sure that she was correctly quoted, but as Barbara Toffler did say, the council makes policy, and part of that policy is deciding on a hiring freeze, and then having the manager do what he can and has to do to follow that. And just as Dr. Toffler said, if something happens and he absolutely needs somebody new, somewhere, he can come back to the council for that. So I didn't understand the whole discussion in The Suburbanite, and I'm hoping that I was, read it wrong, or that it was quoted wrong, that this council sets the policy, and part of that policy can be a hiring freeze. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak?
Dr. Alex Rashin, TNEC. So I'll be practical, I think. We have to cut budgeted, cut tax levy, because one or two old residents who live here for most of their lives, friends and all that, if they have to leave, okay, it's much worse, much more important than any buildings can be built on by excessive spending, any stadiums and all that. So now, just let's do practical. So I'll just refer to the manager's budget, okay? If total hiring freeze is adopted, which I think is absolutely necessary, because it's the only way to use attrition and increase productivity, it means that if somebody leaves, and it's not just vital position, nobody is hired. So then, there were vacancies on the page 11, which, okay, and new. So if we total savings on not filling this position, not putting them on the budget, that will be $1,250,000 saving, and this is levy, tax levy, as far as I understand. Okay, now, the thing is that there was agreement previously not to buy police cars. That's savings of $150,000. Now, on page 123, there was a disposal cost, budgeted for 2014 at $716,000, and before line is spent from January to November of 2013, $331,000. No justifications for a double increase in the disposal cost. Therefore, we can easily just cut $200,000 from there, or more, okay? So saves $200,000. Then, the auditor here said that rating agencies would be fairly happy with surplus $1 million smaller than it is now on the books, than $3-plus million. Okay, don't take $1 million, take $500,000 from the surplus, okay, for savings. If we take this all together, we get total reduction of tax levy of $1,875,000. I've been told that a couple of positions, a few positions for the police, for the fire department, were already filled. First of all, I didn't see proper procedure when the council approved some resolution or whatever it is on hiring. It was done because manager decided to do so. I don't, we didn't have budget, and here's the point. If it's possible to come back and to cancel, do that. That would be, well, just extra thing. If $200,000 is lost, okay, still, we can cut $1,675,000 from tax levy, okay? Now, to avoid looking like cheaters, okay, four council members should vote against ordinance 24-2014 of July 15, which asks to go over the limit and to establish the cap bank, okay? So if will be a real emergency, there are always ways to raise money for these emergencies. Therefore, you see, this resolution, this ordinance should be rejected by four members of the council, okay? That would just leave us free, okay? Now, this is about, mainly about the tax levy, I spoke about that. Now, we have bonds, okay? And, well, the thing is that one bond should be approved, probably with amendment if possible, and this is for the Downing Street sewers, whatever it is, okay, Dremich, okay? Because otherwise, it will be impossible to do the work. Actually, the resolution says Downing Street and some other places, I don't want to see other places, I would like to see amendment only Downing Street, okay? Because other places apparently are not specified, it's not clear. So, all right, so if will be necessary to get...
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I need you to find that period.
Listen, are we going, we came here, okay, one more thing. There was no, no, no meeting on calendar. People could not see that.
I know.
Okay, and therefore, you see, now we have to use time and not just cut it, okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. So please, please cut this bond, okay?
Okay, thank you.
And it's not everything, okay?
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, Mr. Vatsky, you're batting cleanup?
I hope so. Art Vatsky, TNEC. I have a couple of good things to say tonight. One is that about two weeks ago, I trapped myself under my refrigerator. I was able to call for help. Someone called in 911, I still don't know who called it in for me, and the police and the fire, and the ambulance car came and caught me out, checked me out, and did a fine job. Also, today, through a request from the, through the municipal website, the DPW came by and it took down significant portions of a dead or dying tree that was overhanging in the street, and we know from experience that limbs overhanging in the street, or even overhanging the lawn, they could come down, could do injury, do damage. So I'm grateful for that. Quality professional work by our town. But now, I want to mention some of the things I learned last week at the prior meeting. Use of the word surplus, I think is inappropriate. You've seen my email, hope you read it. The word contingency seems to fit the needs that Councilman Castle raised about putting so much money in the budget, taking so much money out of the people's pockets in case. And, you know, I thought of that as a 0% loan from the people of TNEC, and I object to that. We have to have contingency money, but not all contingencies will be spent, and as has been said here, that sometimes the rates are so low on interest that if we did find that we did not have sufficient funds, then the town ought to have a line of credit existing, and with the approval of the council, more funds could be taken on loan that could be paid quickly, rather than taking $4 million out of the checkbooks of the people of TNEC that may or may not be used. checkbooks of the people of TNEC for may or may not be used. Now, obviously, some mention has been made about the use of funds. It is surprising how expensive so much of our projects are. The extension of the town hall, the field. And what concerns me somehow as a function of government mayor, deputy mayor, acting mayor, is that you're the only member of this council who is here and voted for the streetscape. And a project like, that comes out like that, and a body of government that lets that pass by, doesn't sound like it's representing me. It's clearly deficient, and I know you went to court or negotiated some money, but that's not sufficient to the damage that was done and the waste of money. I still need an explanation of why this council, that council, maybe this council now, will have the courage to have an investigation as to what happened, so the people of TNEC knows what happened to that 4 million dollars. Why we didn't have an investigation doesn't sound responsible. Disappointing is what it sounds like. You spent our money, we got less than fair value. Get on your high horses, go out there, file a suit, check the warranty, check the guarantee. Not be silent as you have been in the hundreds of letters I've written and the dozens of times I've spoken. You look deficient. And that's what some of us think of you as a council. You've got to change your ways. Being quiet when there's disservice to the people of TNEC is not the way for a council to go. You haven't taken care of our money, and you haven't taken care of the time. Time is even more important than money. Okay. I'll mention also, it hurts me still as a professional in the industry, that we don't have a few hundred thousand dollars, a few hundred thousand dollars, not multi-million, for a semi-permanent structure for the maintenance of our truck fleet, which is worth millions. You know, I have a difference of opinion with the manager, whether we're a full-service town or not. There's two, there's two things we miss: garbage collection and a DPW garage.
Thank you very much. Goodenwell Fair is now closed. I'll open up to the council members. Do you want us to start on my right? Councilman Castle, want to respond?
Absolutely. So, starting with Dr. Toffler.
Turn your mic off.
It is on.
I can't hear it.
Can you guys—
It's about kids, isn't it?
All right. I agree with the aspect of a hiring freeze through 2015. But I think that, you know, I'm of the opinion that the hiring freeze should be also retroactive to positions that were approved in last year's budget that haven't been filled to date. And by doing so, we can avoid situations where we're hiring employees who were approved in previous year's budget, because that's kind of what we, that's kind of the situation that we're in right now. We've hired employees who were approved in previous year's budgets. Those positions were vacant, and we hired them this year because they were previously approved, and that kind of circumvents a hiring freeze. But we would have to actually take action to direct the manager to do a hiring freeze. You're 100% correct that this body, this governing body is supposed to create the policy, direct the manager to implement the policy, and we've somewhat abdicated that responsibility. And I think that we, you know, it's not anything that the manager has done, it's what we as a governing body have allowed him to do, to take those liberties and privileges, because we actually haven't collectively, and I say "we," this council and previous councils, we have not taken the firmest step to give direction. Mr. Rose, I agree with your statements. You know, we are a full, we are not a full-service township, we are a multi-service township. If we were a full-service township, then the three may, or, excuse me, the three neighbors that I have on my left, my right, and across the street would knock on the door and ask me why we don't pick up trash. I mean, that, if we were a full-service township, that'd be part of full service, because our neighboring towns do have trash pickup. So I agree with you. We have to do better, and hopefully, this second meeting dedicated to the budget means that we are at least taking steps to have meaningful conversations and take the input of the residents to be better. For Dr. Powers, you know, this is the, everybody is right. Everybody that got up and spoke was right this evening. 90% of the overtime has been, you know, 90% of the overtime budget, of last year's overtime budget has been exceeded. There's a cap that we have in place. I've spoken with the state myself, I've spoken with the manager about it, there's, you know, they give us some leeway, but to their own admission, they did not expect, when writing those mandates, that any township would ever get to a point that they were seven months into a year and they were still operating off of an emergency budget. They gave a 1.5% increase. And, I mean, that's from the state's mouth. You know, I called Thomas Neff's office, and they directed me to a gentleman who's, you know, who was in charge of writing that, and it was, it's 1.5%. And they never expected townships to be in this position. I agree about the 1.4 million dollar turf field, but that train has left the station. So I— Ms. Kramer, we have been working diligently to figure out ways to bring down legal costs. You know that, for myself, it is something that I campaigned on, you know, Alan Stone campaigned on. We've sat down, we had conversations before we even were sworn in with the township attorney to see where we could actually lower those legal expenses. You know, you were kind enough to provide information from neighboring towns about legal expenses, and all of that information has been taken in. And I, I don't believe that we've gone so far down this rabbit hole that we can't climb back out. I think that we should, and I agree with you, I mean, it just keeps going. We should average all the years. We should, we should average the years where we incurred huge legal expenses, but also years like the one where we expect to be in, where legal expenses should not be as high as they were in previous years, because we don't have the same demands. Dr. Rashin, tax levying, I put a note here that there's always a way for us to accommodate emergencies. There is. If we, if we directed the manager to bring in a budget of $69 million, like it was last year, and we had to, for some reason, go over that because we hit the $69 million, yes, then there's a justification that needs to be made. I don't know why we haven't been governing that, governing that way, but if there's anything I can do about it, we will, we will begin to govern that way if we can get a consensus of individuals. I made the joke to Alan Stone today that my haircut, you know, my new, you know, low drag haircut is a representation of how I feel about a budgetary increase. You know, cut what you don't need and keep it going, right? I don't want to see an increase in the budget. I know we may not be able to have an increase, a 0% increase in spending, but I don't think we should be budgeting money that we don't intend to use. Dr. Vaske, or, excuse me, Art Vaske? Is it Dr. Vaske? Art? No? Surplus versus contingency, yes, we've been using the contingency, but I will disagree with you on one thing. You said it's a 0% loan from the taxpayers. It's not a 0% loan from the taxpayers. That contingency money that we build in, that 4 million dollars that we borrow from surplus and put into the budget, you're paying an increase the next year, because when the budget increases, we're borrowing based on last year's money, if that makes sense. You know, we're building in 4 million dollars of surplus, and that's part of the budget. That's what we're using to balance the budget. And if there's an increase next, you know, this year, that increase of 71 is based on an increase of 69 from last year. We didn't use 69 million dollars last year, but we're asking you to pay 71 this year. And I think that that's patently unfair. And lastly, yes, there should be a couple hundred thousand dollars in reserve as a contingency for DPW. And when the manager took me on a tour of the township and we went to the DPW, you know, some of that contingency money that they get from recycling was used on trucks, right? So they're building money for contingency to be used on things, but we don't have a shed. I think you've said it, you know, at every single meeting over the past two years that I've sat in on, we need to protect the investment. We're not protecting the investment, so any contingency money that we're, that we're spending, it's good money after bad. Later on this evening, with the assistance of the clerk and the manager, I've created a chart that shows you exactly how we're spending. The money we're asking for, the money that we're actually spending, and the chasm, the millions of dollars of a chasm between what we've asked for and what we spent, but what the taxpayers are actually getting taxed on every single year. It is unfair, and we have to stop doing that. And I think that we should, we should like my haircut, you know, have a 0% increase and cut what we don't need.
Thank you.
You know, everybody, everybody up here deserves some level of criticism, but the council should handle the most, because the council hasn't acted. The council has postponed acting, waiting for the new guys. And the new guys have come forward with new ideas, but they don't have any money either. I think that at the end of the day, maybe not today, but definitely by the end of the meeting on the 12th, we have to have a number that we can put out to the public and end the crisis that we have for 2014 tax year. That's what we have to do. All the conversation around it is kind of a waste of time. The state requires the TNEC have a budget, and it must have one prior to the end of August. Now, let me give you a little bit of history, and I think it might be helpful if you pay close attention. The manager's recommended budget for this year was $71,280,000. The introduced budget was $70,859,000, which means that there was a cut from the manager's budget of 421,000. We will have to come up with a figure within this conversation or within a subsequent conversation to determine how much more needs to cut from this particular year's budget so we can move forward. Now, let me speak on the manager's side. The recent audit and the audit of the year before sound no material weakness in managing the money. Moody's financial assessment rating was AA last year and AA this year. The recent bond sales rate was, I believe, 2.8%.
2.67.
Is that the right number?
2.67.
Okay, whatever it was, it was low. The financial community outside of TNEC is not unhappy with how TNEC manages its money. The state is unhappy, and the township people are unhappy. But as far as the manager is concerned, he has done a credible job. The council has not, and it's up to us to rectify that. It's common practice for municipal managers to use unfilled salary lines to provide budgetary flexibility to meet unexpected contingencies like excessive tax rebates, severe weather, and other kinds of things. That's not illegal, it's something that managers do. Any money left over at the end of the year goes into surplus. And the manager last week said to us, 4.5 million dollars is a risky surplus. What I believe needs to happen, not in this budget, but in the budget for 2015, I'm recommending the following things be done. First one is for the manager to meet with his department heads and let them know that as far as their budget is concerned, it's got to be flat. No increase for next year. We understand that there'll be a 2% salary increase, because that's the agreement we have with the workers, but as far as the departmental budgets, they need to be flat. Immediately, this council needs to visit the dispatch operation in Mawar to see whether or not we can save some money in that particular area. Immediately, set up a meeting with the council and the Board of Ed to talk about shared services. They have a 90 million dollar budget, we got a 70 million dollar budget. There's got to be something in there that we can share and save money for the township. We also need to get seriously involved with our existing five-town consortium. There's got to be some opportunities in that for us to begin to get some shared possibilities and to save some money. We have tiptoed around that, we haven't used it. Also, other sources of income. There are more than 100 municipally-owned properties in town. Many of them are one-family building lots. If we sold 10 of them, and I just happen to have a list, and I'm not going to read the list, but the value of those 10 building lots is 2.2 million dollars that could go into next year's budget. In addition to that, each building lot would have a house on it, and the average amount from each house is $10,000. That gives you an ongoing $100,000 each year that we don't have now, because we're sitting on that property. In addition to that, there are some properties in the town that we need to get aggressive about in terms of how we can develop those areas. Have the courage to put the billboard on Route 4. Get the maximum amount of money from that, because it really, outside of people not warning it, it doesn't face anybody's property. Enter into a power purchase agreement with solar panel companies and put the solar panels on the roofs in the municipality that can, that can handle that. I just got off the phone with Mr. Finger, and the Board of Ed really does save money by a power purchase agreement. And let me explain that, because I don't think people get it. It costs the township zero. And what happened, I believe, and this is an old figure, the township of, of the Board of Ed was spending 14 cents per kilowatt. And when they allowed the power purchase people to come in, they only had to pay 8 cents per kilowatt. Now, 8 minus 14 is what, 6 cents? They saved every time they used a kilowatt. We can get a benefit from that at no cost to taxpayers. Additionally, we should hire a grant writer to look for municipal grants and pay that person as a percentage of the grants that they win. No cost, positive benefit. Last, seek out, my main man is here, seek out a community developer and put together a town-wide proposal for smart development in an effort to lighten the load on the homeowners. Cell towers is another possibility. We need to begin to think about how we can live in this town, not have it changed dramatically, but changed in a kind of a sort of smart way, and not be afraid to do some of these things, because I'm, I'm very clear that no matter what it is, we're going to have people come and complain about it. But if the deal is, we're going to reduce the obligation of the— But if the deal is, we're going to reduce the obligation of the homeowner and not have 20-story skyscrapers, then we need to go forward and do that. And that's my little comment for now.
Are we going to, is this good and welfare still?
This is good and welfare.
Can we start with our comments?
We're going to talk about the budget next.
The only thing I want to go from good and welfare, and I have a lot of comments to make when it is my turn. If I could just ask the manager to address two comments that seem quite lucrative from Dr. Rashim's comment. The disposal cost item, I believe he wrote down that there's $716,000 budgeted, but in 11 months, in '13, we only spent $331,000. If I could just ask him to explain that. And the other item which we started talking about last year, which he may have mentioned was last week, was we had a surplus and the auditor was comfortable with, our boner rating was comfortable with the surplus, but there was some juice left in that number as to, do we have too much in the surplus? We can squeeze that number down a little bit, which may be a few hundred thousand dollars. So if I can just get answers to those two questions. And just to comment on, Dr. Pruitt, we, dispatch, we said we want to go up to the dispatch as soon as possible. Do we have that date? I know we were thinking Thursday or next Tuesday. Is that, is it?
No. Do we have to go together? Do we have to all?
Well, that's, I think, what is our date?
We're making a lease.
Yeah. Do we have, is that, are we confirmed for the dates?
It should be confirmed shortly. She's working on the scheduling.
Because that was, I believe, $450,000 was one of the ideal numbers that we actually want to look at if we can implement for next year. So I've got quite a bit of other comments, but I'll get my answers first, and then when it's my turn, I'd like to go through them.
Thank you. Councilman Sone.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, feel my.
I believe what he may be referring to, Mr. Rashim, is the disposal costs which cover leaf disposal. In that budget, we had in there money, we had the amount that we spent from January to November. Those leaf disposal costs wouldn't have come in until probably December or January. So that's one reason, that's one reason why that document had a lower cost. But those bills may come in in December, January. I'm not sure what particular month they came in, but I'm sure we expended everything in those lines because we had contracts for the disposal of leaves. And the other issue regarding the amount of surplus the township has and what Moody's Investor Services said about it, they discussed our declining surplus; they discussed the threat to our current financial position in surplus; and they discussed, you know, how it needs to stabilize, and it's a factor in establishing our credit rating. The auditor did say that it could be possible that our rating may not be affected if our surplus declined further. We also anticipate that it may decline a little bit more before leveling out after 2015. But I just want to say one thing, that the surplus is not a contingency. You know, I keep hearing those two words used synonymously. We're not talking about using the surplus as a contingency just in case. We use, we actually use the surplus to balance the budget. Money is used every year from the money that we save, from the money that we don't expend to balance the budget. We use it as a revenue to balance the budget. So it's not just, you know, a mere contingency sitting there just in case as you would define a contingency.
Thank you very much.
Test Miss Brown. Once she gets a chance, just to fill out that 2013 final number. Can we, will you get a chance? Can we get that number? I mean, there's 400,000 missing, so if we could just, maybe it's all gone. Like you said, I just want to cross off my list. Can we get that 2013 disposal cost number?
They have, they would have that present summary report distributed. They would take a considerable amount with them in each one of these pages, but...
Can you just let me, when you, just the answer. I understand why it's not here, the bills don't come into 2014.
No, there's actually been a report given to each councilperson of the detail of the line items. And if you look under the Public Works line items and disposal clauses.
I'll look at that as the meeting goes on, I'll report.
Councilman Sone on good and welfare.
On good and welfare, I will report on disposal costs. If the budget adopted last year was $657,000, and that the paid year-to-date, based on the 2013 numbers, was $504,504 and a penny. So we were $152,000 over on there. Again, perhaps, maybe it's not as the $200,000 that Dr. Rashim had indicated, but there may be some opportunities there. I think the comments that Dr. Toffler made are 100% accurate. I think we, it is 100% appropriate to say that we are in a crisis. And it is appropriate to say that the question of how we set policy on how the money is spent is the job of the council. That is the job of what the council does, as directed by the people, to direct to the manager. I hope that, I sincerely hope that Mr. Rose is not requoted again in the next issue of the Suburbanite with quotes from February. But I think some of those remarks are really just very, very timely to see six months later and to see where we are. That residents once again ask the council to ease the burden on taxpayers. As was stated at the end of January, some residents have argued that taxes may rise more than 2% higher than the reported 3.11%. Based on numbers that I requested and based on numbers that are available this evening, taxpayers for 2014 will see an increase on their taxes on the average $450,000 home of $410. That's a 3.66% increase overall. The municipal budget, accounting for the municipal budget and library, will be up by 5.43%. I would say that is substantially higher than 3.11%. That is the budget that we are responsible for. And as Dr. Powers has pointed out, there has been a consistent faster set of increases in the council budget than in the Board of Ed budget. And looking this year, basically by a fraction of a percent, the council budget increase on a $70 million budget is pretty much the same size as the Board of Ed's increase on a $90 million budget. We're just spending and increasing at a faster and faster rate. We need to recognize that we are in a crisis. And, Dr. Pruitt, I agree with so many of the recommendations you made. But my concern is, why wait until 2015? We can't afford to wait until 2015. We couldn't afford and needed to have done these things years ago, and we need to start now. We need to take every opportunity that we can to make cuts in the budget, to find the relief that taxpayers need in order to see a lower tax, no, a lower budget, a lower tax levy, a lower tax increase. And until we recognize that there is a crisis, and until we recognize that the first way to start with that is to really control hiring, which is the number-one source of spending in our budget, that we will not get control of this budget.
All right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is public input on the 2014 municipal budget. Mr. Manager, did you want, did you have an opening comments before council goes into deliberation, or?
No.
No, okay, fine. I didn't know, based on some of the emails that you sent. So with that, this is the opportunity to, for the council to put forth their suggestions. I do want to say that we do have to come up with a budget. I mean, that's the bottom line. And if we are going to change, just a point of information, Mr. Rupp, if we're going to change anything from what was introduced, I believe at the next meeting, we have to introduce the new budget. Is that correct? Just if you can tell us the rules of the road.
The statute provides that a governing body may amend the budget during or after the public hearing. It may not amend the budget before that. However, if you wish to amend the budget during or after the public hearing, you really need to have made a recommendation thereon that would then be given to your financial people in order to prepare the appropriate budget amendments, since in fact, those budget amendments require multiple changes on multiple pages.
And do we have to reintroduce that new?
Those amendments, subject to certain statutory limits, require rep publication and a public hearing on the amendment. The time period for that is a three-day...
But the bottom line, layman's terms, is that if we come up with changes today, we cannot adopt the budget on the 12th. We're going to have to introduce the amendments.
That's correct, unless the amendments are minor enough to fall within those limits.
That is just the procedure, but that, you know, that's, so now I'll open up the floor. Let me start with, I guess, our subcommittee. Dr. Pruitt.
Yeah, I, I know the budget pretty well, and there is, there's one category, one piece of information we have to keep in mind. We're in the eighth month of a 12-month budget. So being dramatic about it is not a possibility. But there are some areas of proposed hiring that we have not done. And my proposal would be to take half of that money and use that as an additional cut. That would be something like $300,000. That's clean; we don't get caught up in all kinds of debate. And it's something that I believe you can follow as it goes along. And that's my proposal.
Okay, just, Mr. Rupp, tonight, we don't have a full complement of the council. A majority would be considered three?
That's correct.
Or four?
Well, you have one, two, three, four, five.
We have five. So if it was a three-two split, the majority would overrule, would win on three?
That is correct. For the purposes of recommending...
No, I think I want to do this, listen, we all have different ideas of how we want to best put forth this budget. But rather than sitting here and fighting each other or debating it all night and not getting anywhere, everyone can put forth their idea. If they have a majority that would like to accept it, the clerk will write it down, and that will be the amendments that we're going to move forward with. Does that make sense? Is that fair? Right, okay. All right. Dr. Pruitt put forth his first...
He's put forth, can I, can I see his cut? I want to see your cut and triple it if I could. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the services that this township provides. I think we've been able to get by in the last several years without these positions. I'd like to recommend that any vacant position that was put forth that has not been filled, and I believe we've only filled two police, I have, I don't have the new sheet with me, two police and one firefighter. Is that correct? So I'd like to recommend that we do not fill any of those positions. We take that money out of the budget. That's the public works, laborers, dispatchers, the police officers not hired. As far as the park rangers, I think it's a very good use of our money, but I'd like to work with, I'd like to work with volunteers this year.
Can I tell you that park, first of all, volunteer is actually a great idea. Park rangers is, I think, a classification, a very, a very poor name for a classification that we're looking to merge two positions. And, Mr. Manager, you tell me if this is correct, that they were going to act as park enforcement officers and be able to patrol the park or something like that? Was that the original intention?
Yeah, the original intention, and there was different ways the council approached it. We discussed having these particular officers patrol parks. Specifically, we were concerned about the sportsplex and being able to enforce the rules at the sportsplex. And we also had a simultaneous discussion about court officers, about these people having the flexibility to, you know, if they were specials, special police officers, that they could work and do some work in the court for security.
Are these, are those Class II? I'm sorry, just for clarification.
We were having a discussion about Class II versus Class I. One's armed, one is unarmed.
But was that the intention, is to make these park rangers, the slios, I guess what you're calling them?
That's a discussion we had, but it can go, it can go either way. It can be that we make them attached to the police department and be slios, or we can attach them to the recreation department, and it might cost us a little less as basic recreation or monitoring officials for the field. So there's a couple of different ways of doing it.
Mr. Manager, about, just on that topic, so I had a conversation with a sergeant, or sergeant detective, detective sergeant from the Gutenberg Police Department, and they have Class II officers for just these purposes. And it was explained to me that Class II officers have police powers while they're on duty, but they are not part of the pension system. They're paid, you know, an hourly, hourly rate, you know, I guess in Gutenberg, it ranges anywhere from, you know, $12 to $16 an hour, and that it has helped them to reduce, you know, at least budgets from a policing standpoint. But if we're able to reduce budgets from a municipal standpoint, an overall municipal standpoint, I think that that's something that we should definitely all continue to consider.
All right, can I just, can I just ask the question? Taking out the park rangers part for a second, we have a request to freeze all the new hirings that were set, that were sent today. Is that correct, Dr. Pruitt?
I said half, no, he said all.
He said 300; mine came out to 900, less the park rangers. We're going to, that's open the air for the slio park.
Okay, well, let's see if we have a support to freeze all of the hirings, with the exception of the park rangers, which we'll discuss. Is there, is there three or four that agree with that?
If we can include previous positions that were, that were budgeted for, because what we just did was, yes, we hired three police officers and three firefighters, but those were positions that were previously budgeted for. And if we reduce headcount through attrition, you know, somebody leaves the position, so on and so forth, we have to account for those positions that have been previously approved. We have to say, "Hiring freeze."
Hiring freeze, meaning we put away the employment applications. If some police officer leaves, we don't fill that position.
Let me, you want me to give you an update?
Is that what you're saying?
Without council's request, without council's approval.
What the only stipulation, I mean, we have to be able to consider hires that have some effect on public safety. So yes, we should have approval, though.
The answer is, is nothing's set in stone for life.
Yes, hiring freeze, yes.
Hiring freeze, meaning we put away the employment applications. The manager needs, the CFO wins the lottery, and she decides to move, we need a new CFO. She comes to the council and says, "We need a CFO." Right? Yes, that's what you're saying?
Tell me, and I have this...
I wouldn't use a CFO example.
That's not a good example.
I might use a different position, not as the example. We needed a CFO. But if we were to lose, let's say, let's say a member of the clerk's staff went on to other things, then that's a situation where we should be able to, because there is a contingent of employees.
Then the manager would come to us and say, "Listen, we need to hire another person in the clerk's office," and then the council would decide yes or no.
You know, this is too complicated for me. The number of people who we have on staff today, the 29th, cannot increase by anybody between now and January 1st. That's what I think is the hiring freeze.
But this is where we had the disagreement in the beginning. What Councilman Castle is saying, and I happen to agree with what he's saying, is that if the number of staff members decrease, according to your policy, the manager can fill to where we are today. According to his policy, the manager has to come to the council in order to talk about filling it to where we are today.
And so we're not saying no, but we're not saying carte blanche. We're just, we're saying, can you agree on that?
Let's have this, you know, we have a workshop, folks. That's what they call it.
This is a workshop.
So I think we've got three of us so far that agree, and I think you're not far off. We're not disagreeing with you, we're saying, you may hire them with our permission.
Let me, let me make sure I understand what it is. Now, we have in the budget $400,000 for dispatches. Is that correct? These are real numbers. $75,000 for park rangers.
No, we're pulling park rangers from the conversation.
Park rangers taken out for a conversation.
For a conversation.
Come, we've already gotten rid of the park rangers, right?
No, no, we took it out for a separate discussion.
They're not, they're not important. But we're trying to cut the budget.
It may be court officers. We're trying to get a terminology. We're not, we may cut that, we're just...
Okay, all I'm saying is, in my, my study, which is a kind of quiet place, I saw $300,000 coming out of the non-hiring piece that we have not hired people in as a clean cut.
So your $300,000 is...
About half of what could be hired that's not filled right now.
You don't have, do you have any specific ones?
Turn the mic, please.
Do you have any specific?
Well, I have...
Well, I have...
Because, Dr. Pruitt, what I'll do is I'll see if there's a consensus to go for your $300,000, and then I'll see if there's a consensus to go for Councilman Schwartz's...
There is a assistant manager of maintenance or something. What's that extra spot you got?
The construction official, for the assistant construction official.
Okay. That person, the park rangers, and half of the dispatch people. Those are my numbers.
Dr. Pruitt, I just... And I want to point a clarification from the manager, but the assistant construction official by statute, the construction department has to generate revenue to pay for that headcount, correct?
Correct.
So, and it's an important point, because last year, they generated the revenue to pay for their own headcount. They, I mean, they are a revenue generating entity. How do we get back the $75,000 that is loaned to them to get that headcount? Because if the statute requires that they generate revenue to pay for that position, we're not paying for it. Is it... I mean...
Well, it's... That's not how it works. It is...
That's not what the statute provides.
Okay, I'm just...
The statute provides that monies collected, right, for certain construction code fees must be earmarked for those construction code fee purposes, not that they must generate sufficient funds to pay for their staff.
Okay, that's not what... That is not how it was explained when we went through construction. It was explained that they have to generate fees to account for their own overhead, and that includes salaries. I asked this question three times, so if you're saying that that is not correct, then the information that we got during our tour was incorrect, and that's not hiring the individual.
Fine, so...
But can I add something to that discussion?
To which part?
To the construction official, the assistant construction official.
Yes.
This is a discussion we've been having for a very long time regarding the complaints we receive and the delays we incur and citizens incur in moving their construction projects forward. Very often, the construction official may be unavailable for various reasons, and the assistant construction official, who we used to have before the person left several years ago, would be there to manage the office and sign the various documents. Not hiring that person is going to continue these delays and continue the complaints.
So I'll tell you, I don't think there's anyone up here that has a better understanding of what you're saying than me. I think I certainly feel many of the residents' comments, including tonight, I think we dealt with two of them. But I don't think that this is the solution to the problem right now. I think that is a bigger conversation that we have to have about the building department and the building department process, and just hiring an individual and throwing him into the mix is not going to be, in my opinion, the solution. So I will not support this this year. I mean, we can talk about it for next year.
Can I put out a solution for it to talk about next year, but just put that out there and feel?
Can I make a suggestion? No. We have, like, three opinions, and we're not going to get anything done until we flush out everyone's opinion. Dr. Pruitt had his suggestion about the $300,000. Do we have three people or four people that agree with Dr. Pruitt's... Or I should say want to stop it, where Dr. Pruitt is suggesting the cuts?
Two suggestions, just...
Well, I'm... Okay, well, if Dr. Pruitt can't go to yours, then I'm going to go to yours next.
And I...
Okay.
Okay.
$300,000 is a figure that I came up with. I said that should come from the non... The people we haven't hired. Now, if the manager can find $300,000 somewhere else, that's a management prerogative. But the number that I had was $300,000, and I made a recommendation as to where it can come from. Doesn't have to come from there.
Can I try to increase your number?
Fine.
I don't think we should... We're about to do major overhaul, potential major overhaul to the dispatcher's concept. Could I ask you to agree to not do any dispatcher hiring, especially since we may fire them in four months if we go to the excedro? On top of your $300,000?
Now, Councilman Castle and Councilman Schwartz, you have similar proposals. But I asked if you could just carve out the park rangers for the discussion purposes. Yes, Councilman Stone?
Again, I'm, you know, again, you raised, I'm all in. I'm all in. And I think especially, again, even if I can preempt a discussion on park rangers. I don't see using park rangers for the purpose of park rangers. If we were using slios or slio, slios, one or twos for the purpose of court security, 1,000 hours, which I think would be well over what we could possibly use for court security at about $15 an hour, is about $15,000. That's well below a... That's well below the numbers we have included here. I think we can go the full $900,000, and I would be supportive.
Absolutely.
Pretty much in that ballpark of a proposal to make those cuts. And again, furthermore, to ratchet down, that as we have attrition, that again, unless we have council approval, that we ratchet down until we get to a point where we need to bring people in. That is the only... And again, as far as I'm concerned, this is not just a 2014. This continues through 2015.
Fine. So just so I understand your clar... I mean, you're supporting Councilman Stone's... I'm sorry, Councilman Castle and Councilman Schwartz's complete freeze, and the bar moves down as... And freezes at as we have people leaving?
Correct.
Deputy Mayor? And just for a point of clarification, that recommendation is cutting the budget. It's not cutting the spending. And I think that's a very important point of clarification. We're cutting the budget. We're not actually... We haven't even discussed the spending as of yet.
Fine. Just my two cents on the park rangers. I agree that it's a horrible classification as far as the name. It sounds like we're somewhere in the Midwest. My understanding is that this was a classification that was given to individuals that could also act as parking enforcement officers, which is a revenue generating line item for the township of Teaneck, in addition to the fact that it helps enhance and move along people that are abusing parking spots in the merchant areas, since we can't seem to get support on parking meters. So this is another way to help bring that in. So that... And at the same time, they can act as individuals that will oversee our $3 million or $4 million investment in Votee Park as well as other parks where we have complaints. That was my understanding. That was the classification that we were looking for. With that being said, is there any support to keep one, two, and then possibly doing the slios as well?
In the remaining four months or five months we have left, we don't need any park rangers in my book.
Fine. So it doesn't look like we have the support for the park rangers or whatever they were going to end up being called, and it looks like we have the support to completely not hire anyone on this list and come to a complete freeze. Is that correct?
I just want to say that the complete freeze is... I'm all for if some of the four people retire, as long as we just have a council consensus. I'm not looking to strip any agencies or departments or whatnot.
Freeze, and then the bar drops as they retire, and then the manager comes to us?
That week, that week with the consensus.
I'm looking for a number. What number are we talking about?
All of it.
What's the number?
$900,000.
I think that's too high.
How many votes do we need? I mean, we don't have to be in agreement. We just need a majority, right? That's the way I understood government, at least in 101, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. Understand that the hiring freeze is a policy issue, but that is not a budget cut. You have to identify budget cuts, right? In other words, the hiring freeze is a cost containment, but not a budget cut.
From what it sounded like, the council proposed two items. A hiring freeze, which is the policy issue, and the budget cuts of not to fill any of these positions.
Good, good. And that has to be quantified and identified. Now, in all fairness, staff, I think, could do that, but I think that you need to make it clear, you know, what are we talking about? Because it's got to go in separate budgets, got to go DPW, got to go fire, got to go police, you know? It's got to be broken down.
So you want us to read on the record what it is that we just spoke about?
What you're going to ultimately be voting on is an amendment that identifies revisions in specific line items in the budget, not your workbook, but in the budget that was actually distributed. This is the official document, okay? So that's why... Understand that a hiring freeze does not affect this document until you decide that.
No, a hiring freeze is a different policy direction that the council gave the manager. The cuts of 900 from the line items of the vacant positions is what we had a consensus on. Is that... Am I clear?
You're clear. I'm not. The hiring freeze, and William can be the right number, is only $5,000, $5,500,000. Where does 900, 9 million come from? Where's the other 4 million come from?
Wait a second. I'm doing the addition.
900,000, Dr. Pruitt, not 9 million.
Yeah, where is the other... Let's be clear. We're talking about $500,000 in new positions. Where does the $900,000 come from?
Okay, I have that answer.
Sure.
You have the vacant positions.
Can I make a suggestion, William? If you don't mind, if you can maybe read this officially on the record so that this is what we accept. I guess, what do we need? The page number or the department, the amount, the positions?
I'm going to give you the positions that I believe you're talking about.
Okay, right. I'm saying that this is what we're going to officially say yes. This is what it is.
Okay, so I come up with $925,000. One police officer position is $50,000. Eight police civilian dispatchers is $400,000. One firefighter is $50,000. Four public works laborers, $180,000. You have the engineer... Wait, wait, I'm sorry. You have the engineer included in there is $100,000. $70,000 for the park rangers and 75 for the assistant construction official.
What's that?
Now, that total's 925. If you include the engineer in there, we won't have an engineer.
So how do we pay for this outside firm that we were interviewing?
We're paying for them. We have a line for outside engineering services, but it's not enough. It's not going to be able to cover it. So that's a decision council is discussing and has discussed.
But do we have an idea... I guess we don't know yet as far as what the new engineer...
Correct.
Is going to charge.
Deputy Mayor?
We don't know which one we're going to choose yet, if we're going to go to an outside service or if we're keeping that in-house as an employee.
So the manager and I had a conversation about the engineer, and right now, we use a service that we, you know, that we contract to. All the proposals that we have right now are for individuals endeavoring to provide services to the town and provide a minimum number of hours. It's not an in-house engineer. But this is one of those...
I guess it's working.
This is one of those situations where if the manager were to identify an engineering candidate, and he could present that it would, you know, result in significance of cost savings to the town, then we, as a council, should hear a presentation from the manager about that candidate, not a service, but the candidate, and we make a decision as a governing body to say, "Okay, we need an engineer. Let's hire one." But 3/4 of the way through the year, we don't have an engineer, and we have no prospects for an in-house engineer. We only have prospects to change the service.
Okay. So you're agreeing with taking that $100,000 out as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the number is 925 that the manager identified. Jamie, did you get all the information that you need in order to prepare whatever documents you need to prepare for the next meeting?
Mr. Deputy Mayor from...
Can we also, in this discussion, the list of concerns that I identified...
100%.
We have to address those concerns and how this 95... This $925,000 is going to impact the township's finances and how it's going to impact next year's budget. I think it's critical that before you vote on this, we have a full understanding how we're going to cover those other expenses.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. Do you want to address it right now, or do you want to first go through the rest of the council's proposals and see what else is on there, and then we can always add on based on your comments? What is your preference? Well, I'm sorry, Councilman Stone, if you need a answer.
Yeah, it's...
It's your call.
I mean, I think that we should discuss those things before we take an official vote and decide on doing it.
Okay.
We need to make sure that it's prudent to do it.
Fine. So let's... So if it... Why don't we continue the conversation? We have 925 right now that we've got a consensus, we need to take a vote. Let's hear what else is being put forth, then you can make your comments, and then maybe we can just revisit. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Is that put in the cart before the horse, or should we hear your comments first? Maybe that will give us pause and not...
I think as long as we don't vote on it yet and everybody gets to say what they need... We know what the proposal is, so we're discussing how the proposal's going to impact finances.
Let me make sure I understand what we're doing here. Where is the $900,000 coming from? Would you restate that?
The $900,000 is coming from the elimination of funding for vacant positions. One police officer position, $50,000. Eight police civilian dispatchers, $400,000. One firefighter position, $50,000. Four public works laborers, $180,000. One township engineer, $100,000. Four park rangers, $70,000. And one assistant construction official, $75,000.
A very important moment now, so we know what we're talking about. Those people are not working for Teaneck today.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, Councilman Stone?
Again, correct. There are 15 vacant positions and five new positions that would be not filled, totaling $925,000. Ms. Brown, if we can ask, again, in addition to not paying those people a salary, we also don't pay those people pensions, PERS, PFRS. We don't pay their health benefits. We don't pay social security. Are those expenses reflected in the budget?
Well, first of all, police officers are not subject...
Well, PERS or PFRS. So again, we do have police and fire officers in there.
PERS and PFRS, it's not a current calculation, so there won't be that immediate savings. Okay? Also, social security, police officers are not subject to social security. So... And actually, any new hires contribute most likely close to 35% of their health insurance.
Again, 35, but we're paying...
So we're talking about... We're not talking about that significant savings that you're presenting.
Again, I'm just saying, there are some added costs. There's some added costs that would be incurred by hiring people, and again, a third, even the 2/3 that we do pay of the state health benefit plan is a pretty significant amount. It's about $18,000 a year now, or is that... So it's about $12,000 that we're covering.
There's several plans. I don't know.
That's about, on average, what we're paying. Again, I think we also have to balance that, and I think I would like to see a case made. Again, do we incur additional overtime? And we need to balance that. I think, Deputy Mayor Katz, I think you've made an excellent point that there may be an opportunity for some of these positions, in essence, to be self-funding instead of being a cost center to be revenue generating. Where we can look... And again, it turns out it's not the case for a construction official, but perhaps an argument could be made that if we are more aggressively making sure that parking rules are enforced, that we might be able to turn that into a revenue generating item rather than simply an expense. But as of right now, this is an expense that we cannot afford. And I know the manager will ultimately go through that list, but I think that the list of items and concerns that needs to be addressed totals items that could run up to eight to ten million dollars. I mean, rather than being a reason to be more careful, I think if anything, it's a reason to be more aggressive, that we need to be more aggressive in the way we cut, because the outstanding liabilities we have are even greater than the ones that are reflected in the current budget right now.
Let me just continue along that line about some of the positions and the impact.
So you know, can I make a suggestion? Can you just go through the whole, your whole impact right now, and rather than...
Okay, I'll just, let me just give the first one, since we're talking about it. The civilian dispatchers. We've always had nine civilian dispatchers. You have one for each of the squads, so you have nine civilian dispatchers. When we came up with this plan of possibly moving to the county service, we added the dispatchers. We decided not to rehire those dispatchers. In case we move, we would have to terminate them. So we're down to six dispatchers, okay? If we don't fill those three dispatch positions, you will see overtime for the police department significantly increase, because police officers will have to fill those three dispatch positions on overtime.
But they've been doing that now for how long? Since last year, at least, correct?
They've been doing it, they've been doing it this year, probably some of last year, they may have done it. But when word came out about the township possibly moving to county service, we had people leave.
So we have to make a decision as to whether or not we're going to county?
Yes. So those three positions, those three positions that we're cutting here tonight were positions that we've always had, so that we would be appropriately staffed for dispatches. If we cut those three positions out, we will always have overtime there.
So, I'll tell you my response to that, and my response is unacceptable. And that's personally, I'm not the police chief, I'm not the fire chief, I don't wanna be the DPW chief, I don't wanna be any of them. I don't wanna micromanage the departments. I wanna say, this is the money that the residents can afford, and this is what they have to do, and this is how they have to do it. Don't make me go into the police department and say, "Okay, let's shutter the community policing for a couple of months, and save on that money, and then put those guys on the street, and this guy wears a uniform." That's not what I'm allowed to do, and that's not what I wanna do. So, I think, if you're asking me, and this is just my position, not as the person running the meeting, but as a council member, you know, we have to convey that this is the money we have. This is the money that we can spend. The taxpayers cannot afford to spend more right now. We're hitting a breaking point, actually, the breaking point's probably a few years ago. And we're fortunate to have amazing department heads, and I say that with all seriousness. We're fortunate. We can't do business as usual, we have to come up with more creative ways to spend either less or the same amount, and get as good a service, because our residents are demanding of these services. We can't put people in jeopardy, we have to provide the services, and we can do it. We just have to be creative on how we do it. And that's just my comments. I don't wanna be the police chief.
I understand, but this is what you have to understand. You have dispatchers, civilians, that we pay a certain amount to, to man these positions that can be done by civilians. We don't have enough civilian bodies to man the positions, and we can't reduce that number. We have a certain schedule, okay? The officers work six and three, they're on squads. There has to be a number, a certain number of dispatchers, so that there are two on each shift. We need nine dispatchers to do that.
If that's the case...
We won't be able to cover it, it can't be done.
We gotta make sure that we're looking at this. We are three-quarters of the way, well, not three-quarters of the way, but we are, you know, seven months into the year. These positions have been budgeted since the beginning of the year. We don't have dispatchers. If we had any dispatching prospects right now, people that we had interviewed, that they were gonna, they had a start date, we could budget what their salary would be from that start date to the end of the year. But this is asking us to budget a full-year salary on employees that don't exist, and we have no prospects on.
I'm not even talking about the budgeting portion of it, I'm talking about eliminating the positions. If you eliminate the positions...
That's what we said, no, we said a hiring freeze. Institute a hiring freeze, when we as a council make a decision as to whether or not we're going to county, or we're staying here, then we make a decision as to whether or not we hire those individuals. And I just wanna point your attention to something, I mean, this is how we're trending. What we ask for, what we ask for is the blue line, and what we spend is the green line. You can see, our increases are going off of the amount of money that we're appropriating every single year, not the amount of money that we're spending. These dispatcher positions are built into this budget. We have not hired these people. If we don't have any possibility of hiring them before the end of the year, why are we asking taxpayers for money, for salaries, for positions that we don't intend to hire?
But we're having a discussion of cutting the money out of the budget.
Absolutely.
If we do that, you will have built-in overtime by police officers to man positions that can be done right now. We could have prospects tomorrow.
No, now, I don't wanna talk about tomorrow, I wanna talk about what we have right now.
All I'm doing is letting you know what is gonna occur, and that is my responsibility.
And I'd say it's not acceptable.
Eli, if he doesn't have the bodies, he can't, if he, let's say he closes community policing, no more community policing. There's only police officers in community policing. If he closes traffic, there's only police officers in traffic. There's no civilian bodies to put in these dispatch positions, you can't do it.
We only have civilian, I mean, now I'm getting into the micromet, we only have civilians doing the dispatching?
He cannot take the records, people.
No, but is that, is that, do we only have civilians?
They're augmented by officers and firefighters.
They're civilian dispatchers. The people who back them up are police officers when they are not there.
Just a middle ground, a middle ground is that, I understand there may be a need for it, I understand which is gonna cost us overtime. We do have five months left, we may not need dispatchers comes January, or even November, December, whenever we could switch to the county. So I'm willing, as a councilperson, to accept a police overtime the next five months, so as not to hire dispatchers that we don't have yet, but we may have tomorrow, that we may have to fire in four months if we're going to the county. So I'm willing to say, let's take, I'm fine with the overtime increase, so as not to hire dispatchers that we may not need in several months, so I'm gonna try to bridge this gap.
I just wanna understand your comment. I just wanna understand your comment. Is that exceeding the current budgeted overtime you're willing to accept?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm gonna, that's a secondary question. I'm gonna jump right into that question. Again, I don't want services to cut, it's very easy. If you say no overtime, that's great, that sounds great, but then there's a cop that's pulled off the road when there's no more budget left and you need overtime. I don't wanna see that. It's an overtime issue, something we have to work on in the future, but I do not wanna see a hard stop of police overtime that affects services, which will come at any point in the road, or in a traffic, policing, community, whatever sector car. I don't wanna see that effect. I'm fine paying overtime the next four months, and that part not being affected, while we get towards this dispatch, and get towards working on next year's budget. Can we all, but can we make sure that when we're budgeting for overtime? I mean, we know that there's a discrepancy between what an entry-level officer makes, and what a senior officer makes, right? So, I think that we should be able to have an accurate, or at least somewhat accurate forecast of what that overtime number would look like, if we know what class of officer is augmenting the dispatchers. Because otherwise...
It can't work like that. I'm gonna tell you why it can't work like that.
No, I understand that there has to be a rotation.
Overtime has to be distributed by contract fairly and equitably. There's a rotation...
So can't we use the historical, can't we reference historically what we've been doing over the past seven months?
Any officer who's in the rotation for that shift can get the overtime. So it could be a senior officer, if it's his turn up, by contract, he gets it.
I understand that, I'm saying, are we not able to look at what we've done over the past seven months, and make a somewhat accurate projection of what overtime might look like to augment those positions? I can't understand why we can't look at what's happened historically to make some degree of a forecast of what's gonna happen for the rest of the year. Why can't we do that? We've been using overtime right now, why can't we look at... Well, on average, it costs us this dollar amount every month in overtime. It's gonna cost us, on average, this dollar amount for the next five months a year.
Councilman Stone.
We are in the worst possible limbo in this situation. We have a need for nine civilian dispatchers, we have six, because we thought we might go to the county. We're budgeting another eight, which would bring us up to fourteen. I don't understand that number. If we go to the county, we'd go from six down to a need for zero. This has been sitting here and festering for years. This has been a decision that has not been made for several years. And by not making that decision, it's a shame that we're deferring this visit all the way till Tuesday, when we have an opportunity to go on Thursday, and perhaps cut four or five days off of this decision-making process. But, we have put ourselves in a limbo, where we are paying significant amounts of overtime, probably well over the cost of hiring those dispatchers, by not making the decision. Let's do the analysis, one way or the other, let's have professional dispatch. I mean, again, I think this is an issue that, you know, firefighters, dispatching from cards. You know, we need to either update this, and do what we have, and do it professionally, or go to the county, and let's bring it over to them. We can't not make this decision, this decision must be made one way or the other.
To your point, regardless of what decision we make, whether we keep dispatching here in TNEC, or we go to the county, we still have to get a computer-aided dispatch system. And, I mean, the fire chief informed us of that, if we're going with the county, we have to have a system in place. If we hire these dispatchers, we have to improve upon the system and have the system in place. And that is an expense that ranges anywhere from, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars upwards, depending on what bells and whistles you have. So, why not budget for what we know we're gonna have to implement, and then make a decision as to whether or not we're going to go to the county, or stay here? But we're gonna have to spend money on a computer-aided dispatch system, regardless.
Did you see the proposal from the county, it discussed...
Councilman Schwartz, can I, Councilman Pruitt?
Yeah, let's, I turned to a pumpkin at nine o'clock, but here's the thing. I think we're here tonight to come to some conclusion on what amount of money can come out of this budget and not destabilize the township. We can spend the next half an hour sort of talking about dispatchers, but someone recommended nine hundred thousand dollars. And I wanna know if we can go home and say, "Okay, we're gonna take nine hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, and not get a phone call on November that it's snowing like the places outside, and we don't have enough plows to get into your street." That's what I'm talking about. So, let's not have this theoretical discussion about whether we need dispatchers, or computers, censored, whatever it is. The point we have to come to tonight, hopefully, is what is the number? Because we're seven months into the budget. We're not gonna make any dramatic changes on the budget, but we gotta make some kind of change so we can get past this crisis.
Dr. Pruitt, I wholeheartedly disagree.
Counsel, I need to be equitable, as far as calling on people, I'm sorry. All right, did you say you wanted something again?
We'll talk about this, there's a dispatch conversation when the time's right.
Can I just ask a question to the attorney? Are we allowed to give the manager a number tonight, and tell him to, and not identify specific cuts?
Yeah, I don't expect the council to be able to identify line items, but you need to give the manager sufficient direction so that he, together with the CFO, and perhaps he wanted her, can get together to identify those line items and those specific cuts. That's, right, so if it, what I've heard so far is that the council wants to cut either nine hundred or nine and a quarter, those new and vacant positions. Those can be identified by line items, and that can be done, right? An amendment can be drafted to cause that to happen.
Okay, so we have two proposals, just so council understands. We have the exact line item proposal, and we have Councilman Pruitt's suggestion of this is the dollar amount proposal. I don't...
If we can come to a dollar amount proposal, with some flexibility in the manager's office, to tell us where that's gonna come from, I think we're better off than trying to sit here tonight and figure out whether it's one of these, or two of those, or whatever it is.
So the number that has been proposed, and there's a consensus on, is nine and a quarter, based on specific cuts? Is there, and I didn't ask if there was anything more, is there anything else, or anything?
Deputy Mayor, and I just, last year alone, I mean, I charted it so it was clear, you didn't have to, you know, imagine numbers on a spreadsheet. We asked for sixty-nine million dollars, and we spent sixty-five. There is a wide chasm, millions of dollars, between what we've been asking for, and what we've actually been spending. It's a wide chasm, and I took these numbers leveraging both what the CFO was able to provide on the website, what Tom Abbott had on his website, and I even went so far as to look at the last dollar amount. What was reported in 2013 about what was spent in 2012.
So what is your proposed number?
That we not have a budget that exceed at all the sixty-nine million dollars that was appropriated last year, because we only spent sixty-five million of it.
Just for clarification, if, according to Dr. Pruitt, we're introducing a budget of seventy million, eight hundred and fifty-nine, and we're minusing the proposed nine hundred and twenty-five, that brings us into sixty-nine something, is that correct? Councilman Stone, you wanna do the help, move at the calculator? Right? Does that satisfy your comments, or your request?
If we, to a degree, if we direct the manager to present a budget that does not exceed the sixty-nine million dollars, and we not actually adopt a budget that exceeds sixty-nine million dollars, we can subsequently go to the manager and allow him to manage and find cost savings in places through the end of the year.
Just for clarification.
Sixty-nine million or less, yes, that's...
Sixty-nine, zero, 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 or less, as opposed to what's been proposed, which is sixty-nine, seven hundred, or eight hundred something thou, sorry, seven hundred something thousand, correct? Councilman Stone?
I don't want to create a disturbance here, but we're almost in agreement for nine hundred thousand dollar cut. I don't know what that number is in total, but to say that because it was sixty-nine million dollars last year, we can make it sixty-nine million dollars this year, is not sane to me.
In Councilman Castle's, not to put words in his mouth, but I don't think he cares. Maybe he just used that as a reference, but he's basically saying, it's not nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, it's one point six two five, or something like that, is that, is that right?
If I can address...
And get to sixty-nine million, and the reason why we think you can get to sixty-nine, because last year we budgeted...
Sixty-nine, and we didn't spend sixty-nine. And we returned all the money that we borrowed from surplus back to surplus.
Where is the money that you say we asked for, and we didn't spend?
So, let me, I will tell you, if you give me a chance.
Where is the money?
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Castle.
Last year, and the CFO can correct me if I'm wrong, we borrowed from surplus to balance the budget, roughly four million dollars, correct? How much money did we return to surplus last year?
My understanding, less than four million.
Okay, so less than four million, but more than three million? I mean, less than four million, is it, that's...
I would need the annual...
So we returned back to surplus, three point one million dollars. We borrowed four million dollars from surplus, we returned back three point one, which means that we did not spend three point one million dollars of surplus that we borrowed.
No, you're, that's absolutely so...
Then give me an actual number. How much money of the surplus...
What we balanced in surplus has nothing to do with what we expended, it has to do with what we actually received in revenue. We were able to add back to surplus.
And we're counting surplus as revenue. I'm looking at the numbers that you presented...
No, 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 surplus...
Did we spend sixty-five million dollars last year? Or did we spend more?
We spent more.
Okay, did we spend, did we spend the sixty-nine million that we actually asked for? Because I'm looking at the numbers that you delivered to the state, and it said sixty-five million dollars.
Approximately sixty-seven million, because we absorbed two million in tax appeals.
So the numbers that are on the documents, that are on our website...
There's several items that, there are several items to the piece of the puzzle, you seem to be stuck on appropriations. There are charges to surplus. There are, there's tax appeal refunds, there's the appeals, there's...
I understand that, I'm looking at the numbers that you published. Those numbers that you published...
As appropriations, so you're looking at one piece of a greater picture, and you're distorting the numbers by talking about the surplus...
I'm using the numbers that you sent to the state.
Okay, can I interrupt?
Did you look at the results of operations?
I did.
Let's agree that we can disagree, and we can fill in the conversation after the meeting, but let's come up with the numbers that we're talking about here, okay? So right now, just for clarification, and I didn't, I just did this quick math. It looks like the council is looking to propose a budget of sixty-nine, nine forty-four, zero, 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 right? It's nine hundred and twenty-five minus the seventy-eight, fifty-nine.
Can I get another hundred and fifty thousand from the disposal cost excess? We came under budget?
You could, I mean, Councilman Castle is at sixty-nine, minus the nine forty-four, so...
I'm fine with sixty-nine, seven hundred thousand, which is...
You know, I don't, I'm gonna try to be reasonably reasonable. The council did not function like it was supposed to. And now we're gonna give the manager an impossible task, and blame him if he can't make it. Nine hundred thousand dollars is not the three hundred I suggested, but it's a significant reduction in the budget. I'm in favor of going with that. Beyond that, I'm not interested.
Councilman Stone, do you have, what number are you comfortable with? There's three, there's two and a half numbers on the table.
Again, I'm all in on the nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar number. And that's where... Well, again, I think that's a very big starting point. I think then we start nibbling around edges. I think looking at keeping our budget where we were last year is an admirable goal and objective. And I think if we can hit that, that's what, we owe that to the taxpayers. We also need to balance the other concerns that we have. And again, I think, as Mr. Schwartz, Councilman Schwartz, has pointed out, there are other opportunities, whether it's looking at disposal fees and other fees, where we may have some flexibility to make some cuts. But I think the biggest thing is not to cut, and I think this Councilmember Castle pointed out, is not just to cut the budget, but to look at... out, is not just to cut the budget, but to look at spending. We need to reduce spending and that is a critical issue that we need to start addressing.
I think that's what we're talking about.
And I think one of the, correct, one of the issues, for example, and I would like to see the financial ramifications, one way or the other, either keeping, for example, dispatching, which is, again, it is a separate discussion, but that is something we should keep on going forward to. What is the impact of keeping it in-house in this, in this half or two-thirds way where we're using significant amounts of overtime to cover the dispatch positions versus bringing it to the county or any other alternative and making the decision on that basis and how quickly we can do that. But I think the 925 is a starting point. It is not, it is not, and we don't, we don't close up shop once we have that cut made.
I just want to understand when you say a starting point. Starting point for this budget or starting point for, meaning next budget, we can start to move towards?
No, well, again, for.
I just need, I need clarification.
Both, both. It's this, it's a starting point for this budget and again, hopefully, we keep on moving forward where we're using this budget. Exactly. Where we're in budget season from, starting now until somewhere around March or April of next year.
So for this budget, you are in agreement that you would like to see 925,000 off?
Agreed.
Just, just to flush out, Councilman Schwartz is, what, 150,000 is that?
Mr. Brown, can we take 150 of the excess of the disposal cost and reduce it on this year's budget?
We have an increase.
Okay, let's not get confused between budget and reduction in spending. The number we have to come up with is what is the final budget number?
I just want to get.
And if that number is 925,000 less than the current budget, then we understand it.
This, I'm sorry, this is a workshop, so we do discuss it a little bit. Okay.
Can I get the 150?
I got, I know that in some of our contracts, we have an increase for disposal costs. I got to look at it. 925 to me is significant. Cutting 925 out of this budget is very significant, is going to have a significant impact on surplus and next year.
I'll give you my.
I mean, there's numbers that we got to, let's, can we go down, talk about a couple of things that we need to talk about so that you can agree on a final number?
Okay.
One of the, one of the things is overtime. Overtime, we have the police, one reason, one major reason is because of a lack of dispatchers and the police officers having to fill those positions, they're doing a lot of additional overtime to keep those positions filled, to maintain the two dispatchers they need.
How do we address that right now? Quantify it.
Can I quantify? I can quantify it. I mean, I got, I have tons of information on exactly how much they're spending, but what I'm, what I'm saying to you, this is what I'm saying right now, that we have to think about in cutting this money, okay? The police department to date, they've, we've budgeted $425,000 for overtime. They've spent about $319,000, okay? So right now, they're spending an average of about $150,000 a quarter, okay? So we budgeted 425, so that would be, I would project that they're going to spend another, let's see, that we're going to be over by probably $175,000 on overtime.
That's a lot less than $425,000.
We have to account for that number. We just can't cut out 925 and not think about all of the other things that this may impact.
So why can't you go to your overtime budget and increase that number with the math that you just used to a realistic amount for this year and then get rid of the dispatchers and we come in less? Well, I mean, I'm simply asking that we forecast accurately where we're going to be spending the money. We're 90% the budget, okay, but go in and readjust. Why can't we go in and readjust for realistic numbers and then you come back with those numbers and we've eliminated dispatchers because there's no way we're going to hire them?
All right, I think, if I could sum up, because we're just going to, I know the hours.
You want me to finish a couple of other things that we need to make sure that we address and that there's sufficient funds to address? There's items here that are very important. Tax appeals is significant. If that number comes in wrong, it goes directly to our surplus. If surplus is not sufficient, we have a problem.
If we spend your $71 million right now, we have a problem because we've borrowed money from surplus. Any way you slice it, we've got a problem. There is a crisis, but we can't spend all of the money you've asked for because we've borrowed 4 million from surplus.
William, I think, I think it's very clear to many of us that the current status quo and reducing the money from the current status quo and doing business as we're doing, we're going to have a problem, in your, in your words. I think that, as, I speak for myself only, that I'd like to see things done a little differently so that we can, we work with, you work with the money that you're, that you're given.
I'm, I'm okay with that. It is my responsibility as the township manager to tell you the impact of what it is you're about to do. I have to, I have to tell you that.
I understand that.
Because this is going, this is going to be problematic. Now, now this is one of the things that we haven't talked about. When Glen Point tax appeal does come in and we got to deal with that issue, we're going to have to go before the local finance board and ask them to spread those payments out over several years. And I've been there at those hearings. You know what they're going to want to know? They're going to say, Mr. Browden and Mayor Parker, who's going to have to come with us, you knew that you did not have any money reserved for this potential $5 million judgment and you cut taxes? And you cut taxes? You cut, you potentially cut the money out that could be used to pay this tax appeal.
Is that problem solved in this, in this chart? Because it's not. You haven't accounted for that either way.
No, no, the problem's not solved, but the problem's worsened by what we are about to do here. So what I'm saying to you is, if they deny us the spreading out of those payments, we may have to bear the burden of paying that money in a single year, which is very, very possible.
What other concerns do you have?
Overtime's a big concern. We have to have enough money for overtime. That is, we have to. We don't use it frivolously, we use it when it is necessary.
I understand.
We're getting into this winter storm season, hurricane season, the summer storm season. I cannot tell the police officers at 3 o'clock, you can't go on the call or we're not going to pay you. There has to be sufficient money in the overtime budget or in the salary budget to cover that. That has to occur. We don't know what calls the police are going to go, have to go on. We can't predict it with full surety that this is how much they're going to spend. There has to be enough room there. In most of these items, if we get short on an item and we have an emergency, it means we have to borrow from next year, which will compound our problem. That's the solution to problems.
Can you please explain that? How we, how we borrow from next year if we find ourselves in over.
Depending on what the item is, you would have an emergency, you would need an emergency appropriation and you'll have to account for that emergency appropriation in your next year's budget.
An example is what I'm looking for.
Provide, can you provide an example, please?
I can provide some examples. For example, on the.
Legal.
On the storm damage, right? That's actually a special emergency appropriation. But what happens is, is that when you don't have money to fund that, again, one of the ways to fund that is with surplus, right? But when you don't have the money to fund that, it goes into the following year's budget. There are emergency appropriations on top of that for different items, right? And again, you're essentially borrowing, right, this year and it goes into next year's budget as essentially paying off this year. So the net effect is, is that next year's budget will absorb partly this year's cost plus, of course, next year's costs, right? So you need to understand that that's how it works. There's no free ride. It has to be raised sooner or later. By doing an emergency or a special emergency appropriation, you're essentially deferring it to the following year's budget.
On that note, let me just ask you a follow-up question and the CFO can chime in here. Of the $71 million being asked for in this budget, what are you forecasting is going to be returned back to surplus?
This town, historically, what I've noticed is this town typically has used unexpended funds to return their money to their surplus to balance the budget. I agree, going forward, I would love to see that we start the reduction in the, in the budgeting for the expenses as well as the use of surplus. So my recommendation would be any cut you make now, you also cut the same amount of use of surplus, of the expectation of surplus for next year and now get into a true what gets added back into surplus. So what I am projecting, barring any surprise with the tax appeals or Glen Point or anything, is approximately $2 million, which has been what it has been being added back. The $2 million that was unexpended last year was, most of it was absorbed through the expenditure of tax appeals. So I am expecting, now I know that there has been, I know there's tax appeals filed this year. I don't, I know the quantity of the number of appeals, but I have no idea what that dollar value is going to be. And my intention, because we're out of surplus, some of the surplus absorbed a considerable amount as well last year. We're out of surplus. We're not expecting some of the extra hits we got last year. So last year, we expected to be able to balance the budget with 4.5 million and we only added back 3.5 million. So we're already in a $1 million behind in the surplus. I'm expecting that same trend to continue. As you know, I've given you projections that I expect the surplus to continue to spiral down with these appeals. And I feel like we're not out of the woods till about 2016. I expect some more troubles in next year's budget. I'd love to talk about budget cuts for next year and work on 2016, but the effect of your cuts today only turn around and put us in grave danger for 2015 as well.
Let me, can I say a couple of things?
And then let me wrap up.
Okay, I think that we have a 900,000 and 25, $925,000 recommendation.
Correct.
That we give to the.
Recommendation and identification.
Okay, that we give to the manager and have him figure out where the best place to get that from. And we've made some recommendations, but he doesn't have to stay specifically with that because he's got to figure out how, how best to get the money. I think that next year, we will be a little closer to the budget process as we develop it. And there are only, only two real experts in the room, that's the CFO and the manager. The rest of us have an idea, but we don't know the implications about what happens. So we're giving the best shot that we have to come up with a number so we can get the budget for 2014 into the state and get past the crisis. We got to get past the crisis. Let's fight about next year soon.
Councilman Stone?
To go through some of the surplus history, Christine, that you provided at our first budget subcommittee. Basically, we started 2011 with $7 million in surplus. We worked down that down to 5.6 million at the end of 2011 to 5.1 million at the end of 2012, 4.4 million at the end of 2013. We've been eating up surplus. Based on your projections for 2014, we would end the year with 3.3 million. And I tried to, I desperately tried to ask the auditor in your absence at the last meeting where we can go down with surplus. And I feel like the person who jumped off the Empire State Building and as, as passing the 50th floor says, you know what's so far so good? We have, surplus is plummeting and it's heading down to crisis levels. And you're absolutely right. Cutting 925,000 in budget will effectively take 925,000 out of surplus, okay? We need to find, and that is our task, and I think that's what we're trying to assign to the manager, the task of not just cutting the budget, but cutting the spending. And again, I think that that gap year to year is, again, indicative of where we're just eating up more surplus than we're using. Any family, if you look at a situation where year after year after year, you're spending more money than you're bringing in, you have a problem. There is a crisis. And as the deputy mayor has indicated, we have to change the status quo because we run out. We hit zero. And again, zero is too, is, again, when we hit 2 million, we're probably too low. We need to change the way we work. And I think that this process needs to start now and I agree that we need to be going through this budget process and looking through what we can cut. Again, this 925 is a starting point that would roughly cut the tax levy increase in half, but it needs to be accompanied by those cuts. And I think this is exactly where the council is indicating what it wants done and we're asking the manager to see those cuts made in the budget so that we are in rough fiscal balance with the cuts that we're making. And I propose that we go ahead with a vote to, to just ratify our consensus on making those 925,000 in cuts.
Okay, so I will ask for the roll call in just a minute. I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on their position. Mr. Manager, did you have anything else you wanted to add in? Okay. So, so we're clear on the position as far as policy, that we have, we have, we have a majority that wants to put a hiring freeze with the bar lowering from this point forward. All right, that's a policy decision that the council has, has made. As far as cuts, we have two proposals. One is a 925,000 number that has a consensus and one is a 925,000 number that has specific items, right? We've identified specific items. Anything else? We don't, we don't have a, we don't have a majority, oh, you have three, I guess. You drew your suggestion.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Castle.
If we have a consensus on $900,000.
925,000.
Or 925,000, why can't we direct the manager to put forth a budget that is 925,000 less and let him work with his department head to figure out where those cuts come from? Or just?
That's my recommendation.
If that's okay with the rest of the council? I think we identified because the township attorney said that we have to identify.
All right, so, so make sure I'm on the right page. We're giving him a number.
You don't have to identify those tonight. You have to give the managers them directly.
Give them a number.
Okay, because ultimately, when you vote on an amendment to the budget, that amendment will identify the specific cuts.
So, Mr. Manager, that is the, the direction, we're going to take a vote and, and, right, you want to see if you have a consensus on your 1.8 million?
I want to, I want to see if we have a consensus not to increase the budget from last year. We can, spending is a whole different conversation, but what we're actually asking to appropriate should not be above the dollar amount. It can be below, but it should not be above the dollar amount.
Which is a 1.8 million cut, right?
What's that number?
Well, if, if Dr. Pruitt was accurate with his, his initial opening, which I think he was, he said 70,859 is what was being introduced and you want to introduce 69 million. So that's a 1.859 cut, right? Is that something in that neighborhood?
The number appropriated last year was 69,800,000, correct? 69,800,000?
So it's approximately 1.7 million dollar.
Yes, it should, we should not approve a budget that is above last year's appropriated amount.
Councilman Castle, can I interrupt? There was also $700,000 added to that budget for the cost of the revaluation that we are now paying for. That's one of those items that's an emergency. So that is already built into this year's budget.
So that's, I'm sorry, just for clarification.
The revalue is spread out over five years. It's a $700,000 expenditure spread out over five years. That's not a hit this year.
It's hit this year. One-fifth is, yes.
One-fifth.
Also, from two years, we're also still absorbing 744,000.
Which is the one-third of the 2.2 million.
This year and next year, still, for that. We're also absorbing the debt service plan that we talked about doing and we're also absorbing the increase in the cost of the insurance because we chose not the, the council, at council's direction, we did not choose the plan that would have, we could, could have potentially. been a savings. So we think we have like a 34% increase in our, in our insurance costs.
So I'm asking for a roll call on a proposal to reduce, to reduce the spending of the budget by $925,000, as the manager and the CFO see fit.
Just, could you just clarify that last line? The insurance plan we chose was the less riskier plan. That was not, you know, that just came, that's...
I'm just looking to finish our business, and you guys can work it out with the appropriators. Okay. All right, so that's the, right? Do you hear?
Yeah.
Mr.... Dr. Pruitt, you made a motion to reduce the budget by $925,000, and that motion is seconded by?
Myself. By what?
By Councilman Schwartz. Okay?
Councilmember Castle?
What is that number?
925,000.
I don't care about the 900,000, I care about the number, I care about this not going over last year's number. Does it go over last year's budget, budget number?
The budget, the number that is being, okay, we're in a motion, but, but the number that's being proposed is 925,000 minus 70 million, 859. I don't have a calculator up here, but I believe the number is 69,934.
69,934?
34, 44, but...
What's the number? 69, 70...
Now, if you want, I could take a roll call on yours first, to see if there's a consensus. I'd appreciate that. What you got?
59,934.
Why don't we do this, why don't we continue with this? And then you can always add another motion to reduce it more, and see if it goes. At least you get, on the record, as approved, as saying yes to a reduction of...
So we're going to get a second bite at this apple?
You could make the motion of, you want to reduce it more.
Motion on the floor.
Right, okay, so motion's on the floor, go ahead.
Councilmember Castle?
First round of cuts, yes.
Councilmember Pruitt? Yes? Yes? Okay. Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes. Okay. Councilman Castle has a motion, wants to make a motion to reduce another 800,000, I believe, right?
Reduce to last year's appropriated amount.
Right, so 60, last year was 69,1, this year is 69,4, 69,94, that's 800,000, correct? Someone help me with the calculator?
750?
What, 750?
It's just easier if we, my motion is that we do not approve a budget beyond last year's appropriated amount, and that amount was 69,100,000.
I'll second that.
We got comments on the motion, we're going to get a chance to talk about it. Yeah, the problem is, is that we have a 19-page, 19-point list, 18-point list, I think we should talk about first, of budget concerns that this can adversely affect, and some Dr. Pruitt was saying, and the manager was saying, that I think we should kind of talk about first.
I think the manager conveyed a lot of those concerns, but at 925, I'm sure those concerns will increase at 1.7.
And we're giving, I mean, with this dollar amount, what we're doing is asking the manager to go back and work with his department heads to find these cuts. Many of the items that are on this list, whether we cut or not, are still going to be issues. The $5 million, you know...
Given that this is only 56...
Yeah, but I don't understand, if we, our operating budget, to operate the departments, at 1.7 million, you're talking, you're trying to cut out half of it, of operating expenses.
Didn't we just pass, didn't we pass a vote for 925?
He made another motion to reduce it by another...
To last year's appropriated amount.
Which is another 800...
Understanding that we returned more than 2.5 million of surplus last year.
On the motion, you have, we have the motion, we have it seconded, we want to do a roll call, unless there's any other comments on the motion.
I can only vote on something I have specific numbers of. For example, the 150,000 disposal cost. So I can vote on something that's 150 lower. I answer the blank, here's your money, only spend this much, it's irresponsible.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
You're not going to get that tonight, because the manager's going to have to go back with his new directive, and come back to the next council meeting, and identify the cuts of the numbers that we've proposed, or that we supported. So we, even the 925, we don't have identified cuts. It's, it's the manager to come back.
And Councilman Schwartz, if I asked you...
Let me, let me say this, because I'm getting a little bit warm about this. We don't know, really, what the manager knows, and what the CFO knows. We throw numbers in the air, we think they're going to land someplace. I think that the 925 is a significant budget cut, and I think to consider something beyond that is totally irresponsible.
Councilman Schwartz, the point I wanted to make to you is this. You know what your, your overhead is every month, right? And you know how much you bring in every month. If you recognize that you are spending more than you bring in, I'm, it's not my responsibility to go to you and say, cut this, and this, and this, and this. I'm going to go to you, because you know your, your personal budget, and say, this is the money we have to spend, spend it.
My, my...
Jason, this is not a household budget! Dr. Pruitt, okay? It really can't be...
Absolutely can't. You go back to the department heads, and say, this is the amount of money we have to spend. Now, figure out a way to work with that amount.
I think, okay, I think we heard everybody's side. Councilman Stone even mentioned that it's a work in progress, and this is, this year and next year, we're going to continue. All right, roll call on Councilman Castle's vote.
And this is a motion to...
Reduce...
Reduce the budget.
Which is essentially...
In a total amount reflective of last year's budget.
Correct. Which is $800,000 more.
No.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to do a roll call right now. Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
No.
Councilmember Schwartz?
I...
Censorship goes with the majority.
I think we need more conversation, I'm not ready to vote, I mean, I'm not ready to vote.
No, they know it.
I need more conversation, I'm sorry. I think there's a lot to talk about, I apologize.
Do we need another special meeting before the 12th? Do we have time to do that?
Whether it's a budget subcommittee meeting, or meetings, or another special meeting, I think, again, to look at what we did at the beginning of the year, where there were four budget meetings, to try to imagine that already, all the way in July into August, that we're going to do, find a year's worth of cuts in one meeting, I think is entirely unrealistic. And I think we need to do more analysis, and I think we need to get more data back from the manager. Again, I think one of the things that the, we mentioned, actually, Howard Rose mentioned what Robert Finger has done for the Board of Ed. I'd like to see a menu of opportunities for cuts, where we could make those changes in spending. I think we're starting to get to a point where, we started with 925 in very specific cuts, where we would like to see those things cut out of the budget, and I think now we're getting to a point where we need to start digging deeper, and looking at those numbers, and find a combination of things where we can recommend cuts, and where the manager can recommend where those cuts can be met. So that we're dictating policy, the manager is specifying how those changes will be made.
And Councilman Schwartz, just, the cuts that were identified in the first round...
Can I just say, we're actually in the middle of a roll call, and we should really be doing the roll call.
So, from the whole fair and balanced thing, I could, let me at least finish my statement, since we've had two statements.
But it's your motion. Everyone knows what you're about to say.
He wanted some clarity.
He's not going to have clarity, because you're not going to tell him where the cuts are. Right? He wants clarity from the gentleman, the handsome gentleman at the end, not the handsome gentleman on this end. All right, so, so he's not going to get that clarity tonight from you, he's going to get it from him, and it's probably not going to be tonight, it'll probably be at a different meeting.
We used the handsome gentleman at the end, that me, or that...
The other handsome gentleman. All right. So, Councilman Schwartz, you're assuming no, based on the fact that you don't have enough information? I don't want to vote for you.
You just did. The answer's no, because I don't have enough information.
Councilman's...
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Million and a half, will you, 1.8? What is my...
There's a motion? And there was a vote?
Yes.
Listen, I, I gotta tell you, this council that we have now is less responsible than last year's council, because you know that cut is going to cause a very difficult time in the next six months. If we had done it a year ago, that's fine, but we got five months, and we're going to take $2 million out of the budget. That's ridiculous.
Could we, could we...
Any other...
Yes, I have a few points to start talking. Could we have a few minutes to go over some points in the point, 18-point issue, steps to be taken?
In the what?
In the future. The manager put out 18 points of issues. Could we go over one or two of them that need action steps to get the next budget going? Can I ask, can you just give me a few more minutes?
The next year's budget.
All right, the manager mentioned that we should consider to change the property taxes be paid in the year of the year, to accelerate the lien sale. That brings in several million dollars more, and we need to get that rule started. If I'm correct, Mr. Rupp, we got to start that rule going now, if you want to accelerate it. It's a one-shot deal, but it's several million dollars of responsible payments by responsible taxpayers, and I want to get that rule started right now to bring that money in. That money was in this year, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I'd be...
I don't hear what he said. I don't hear what you said.
I'm talking about point number 17 in your, in your sheet, about the accelerated tax sale. I want to start the accelerated tax sale process. What do we need to do to do that? I brought it up, you recommended it, and I'd like to start, start the process.
All right, that, that's a discussion I got to have with the, with the tax office, to see exactly when we can do it, and if it can be implemented in, in this particular year. There's a period that the township would see, you don't get all of the reduction in one year. Okay, it's spread out over time.
Beautiful.
And Christine, if you could, if you could answer that, what would the impact be on '14 or '15? On '14, probably no.
Even though we might collect more, we're not allowed to use that to balance the budget. We're not allowed to use the, it has, it's an impact on the reserve for uncollected taxes. And we'd start to average that out. So my recommendation would be not to have an accelerated sale, but to have a sale on January 2nd, which would almost, which would give us the control to use that number for relief in 2015.
I'll see you then, January 2nd. Let's do it. We got to, we got to start, if we don't, let's not make this a dispatcher situation, where we talk about, let's just, what do we need to do to get that going?
And the prospect, prospect of doing that on January 2nd also increases the likelihood that taxpayers will pay in 2014 the amount of our owed, and bring up our collection rate.
Correct, that's our intention, and we've been, we've been talking about how to actually put that into play, if it was at council's, that was one of the, you know, the council's entrusted.
So we're set for that, do we need shaking heads? What do we need here? Nods, I can shake my head all night.
We're, we're ready to get the 2014, the 2013 tax appeal, tax sale set, or move that date up, and also now plan for a January 2nd, 2014 tax sale, which will, and we've already been alerting the taxpayers, the delinquent taxpayers, by notifying them that we are hoping to do that.
All right, and Dr. Pruitt is not here, but Mr. Attorney, in order to move forward with his suggestion, is that something that we have to list on the closed session, to sell those, to list the properties that we want to identify to sell?
No, that's actually a matter of public record, all right, in terms of tax delinquencies, so...
No, I'm not talking about tax delinquency, I'm talking about the tax sale.
We're talking about the tax...
We're on to the next item now, yeah, the sale of the actual properties.
You only do, the tax sale items are the delinquent property taxes, and there is no discrimination, everybody has to be...
New subject, new subject.
All right, I got, I got.
Selling township property.
Next item.
Yeah, tax foreclosure sales on tax...
No, no, next...
Selling township property.
Selling, it's a closed session item initially to be discussed, and then it comes back into the open session, correct?
That's listed?
Okay, so we're going to list it into the closed session in the next meeting.
Actually, a decision to sell vacant properties that a township owned is an open session item.
Okay, open session.
So can we, are we able to...
Land acquisition, which are a closed session item.
Can we direct the manager to create a list of township properties that can be sold?
Can we get, can we resolve this budget issue first?
This goes to it. If you're able to close on the sale of a property this year, is that not...
That's not going to happen, those properties are not going to move like that, okay? So, they got to, there's a whole process that they got to go through.
Okay, let's just, let's bring everything in back in, okay, so, we'll bring that up...
Do you want me to list this as a closed item?
Okay, well, it'll be put on the agenda for the, the next council meeting, and then it'll be discussed. Okay, we're not going to sell at the next council meeting. All right, what other items?
Yeah, the one thing I want to talk about, put on the agenda for the next topic, next meeting for next year's budget, is permit fees. For example, the $75,000 construction position, which apparently the manager says we need, but I don't feel it's something we should be taxing all residents for, and if we're going to have a tax increase, I'd rather have a heftier permit fee increase to tax the people who are using that business, as opposed to the 7, 9,000 other properties.
You're saying that this is something that we're going to discuss in January?
No, for next year's budget, next meeting, for next year's budget.
We're in the process of doing a review of the Township Code. Specifically, we're working on Chapter 2 of the Administrative Code. We're going to be looking at fees, and updating fees, and that's something that will come before the council, updating fees.
And just so that Dr. Pruitt knows, he came back, I don't know if you heard from Mo, at the next council meeting, we're going to put on the agenda to discuss the sale of, the selling of properties.
Which property?
Your proposal.
The list, correct.
Your, your properties.
All your properties.
Okay, we're not selling them at the next meeting, we're discussing at the next meeting. Okay. Mr. Manager, I'm sorry. Anything else?
We're looking at the fees, and we'll discuss that for next year's budget, all right?
That's it, I'd say, we're reviewing, we're reviewing the Administrative Code, we're going to be looking at the fees, and making some recommendations to council.
Councilman Schwartz, what else?
Nothing. I think I'm good for now. Permit fee, sorry.
Billboards?
Dispatch, we have, we got, we got dispatcher permit fee.
All right. That's, that's it, anyone else?
Again, I definitely want to see some analysis, one way or the other, either in-house or with county, as to the impact of the dispatchers, and how that would affect over time, how that would affect, and what we would do with the six dispatchers, who are already on the payroll if we switch over to the county.
That's for the next council...
I have a document for you.
You have it? Okay, fine, shall we?
And I'd just like to say, on the record, in open session, I'm confident in the manager's abilities to be able to go back and, you know, resubmit a budget at the new amount. Because he's the, there are details that we don't have, obviously, we said there are two professionals in the room, one is the manager, the other's the CFO, and collaboratively, I'm confident that they can come back with a budget at last year's number, that meets the needs, and we still have an amount that may be returned to surplus.
We will come back with a budget for council, and we will explain to the council what will be the impact of that budget. There is no way that we're going to cut 1.7 million out of the budget, and everything's going to remain the same. Things are going to be different, and they have to be different. We have costs that are increasing, okay? We have increases in salary, we have increase in the reserve for uncollected taxes, we have all these increases, they have to be accounted for.
I'm confident that you all will be able to do it.
We will bring the council back something, and we will explain the impact of it to the council. That's our, that's our responsibility.
Mr. Manager, if I can suggest, listen, first of all, I know that you're the manager, not a magician, and I realize that this budget crisis or tax crisis did not happen overnight, so it's not going to be solved overnight. But I think that even Dr. Pruitt, who was a little bit upset at the way the council acted as a body, will, will agree that this community can sustain such high taxes continuously and, and wants us to go in that direction. Whether he agrees with the number, I don't think, obviously, he made it clear he doesn't.
Can I say something about this? You know what? The budget amount that was more this current year than last year was, at one point, it was stated $130 more per household. So we saved $5 a household and we destabilized TNEC. That's okay with everybody sitting here, but it's damn not okay for me, excuse me.
All right, so if you can suggest obviously a couple of different options when you.
The manager's got to find one.
Okay, all right, any other comments? I got motion to adjourn? Is there a county attorney's report? Manager's report?
I second.